...of meetings, ultimately with a formal recommendation given by the planning commission to the council that the council has seen now twice. We'd like to go through each of those amendment topics and if there were a specific council direction given on an amendment topic that differ from the planning commission recommendation, it will be specified on the slide. I'm going to change the order of the slides of the seven topics and jump to the last amendment topic because we do have the fire marshal here who would like to just give a few words as it relates to fire safety perspective and potential amendments to the ordinance. So I'm going to jump to that topic which is the most general of the seven topics and that was we categorize as just other textual amendments primarily related to-
We visited last year. So this year-
Primarily related to internal consistency between documents. So we get into the specificity that's noted here on this slide, but I'd like to give the fire marshal the opportunity to give his perspective on amendments for fire safety.
And just for everybody's information, it's on page, or I should say, reference to page nine of the staff report.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for letting me be able to attend and actually speak. There's a few things that we were approached with, be able to add comments in regards to the heritage tree ordinance and obviously looking for knowledge that we have. Obviously, in light of several of the fires we've had in the last few years, this is obviously a topic of concern for us and how to address communities and the proper approach. Doing a fair amount of research right now, there is no real answer yet. We're still learning, obviously, due to data and the history record keeping that has taken place. So I've actually done some local research to see what we can do and I'm missing out. So I'm going to let you know what I have found, but it's going to continue on until we find something. But with that, I'm going to make some recommendations that I think that you can take into consideration as we build out in time. Through the staff report, you will notice that the few things that we are looking at is with the next code adoption cycle, we'd like to be able to consider getting a Class A roof requirement in the city so that we can help aid in preventing any spread to rooftops due to any type of canopy fire spread that we may have. The other is looking into proper maintenance of trees and proximity to structures and power lines. I think, obviously, in light of what we've seen, that that is something that we would like to take into how do we actually put that into a proactive practice and being able to utilize any type of permits that we may have outstanding to be able to make the preventative measure. Adding eucalyptus trees as a tree not required for removal, though I also have some other thoughts in regards to other trees. Looking at wildland urban interface requirements, that is something that I think could be something that could be suggested, but obviously I would not want to make it a requirement in the area, though I do, again, have some documentation to show support of the areas that are around us. And then really having an overall goal in an ordinance to assist in making properties more fire resistant. So I have a couple of things that I'm going to pass out. So I made one copy for the planning commission, correct, and one for the city council, and then we can get copy. In this packet, I actually have, Cal Fire actually has San Mateo County's fire hazard severity zones. So I've actually printed out for you here, you're bordering cities that actually have the highest severity zones, which is Woodside and Redwood City. So on the borders, we actually have areas that are required by the state to actually have the most restricted building construction and fire clearances in those properties. So those are neighboring us. The nice thing is we have 280 that separates us and then really Woodside Road. But obviously, when you have winds, et cetera, none of that really matters. So I want you to at least be aware of what is around us and just have that education. The other is I printed out a research article called Vegetation Treatment Program Environmental Impact Report, and it's a draft. So it's just basically kind of looking at how do we, what is the environmental impact that we have when it comes to vegetation management? What are good practices and how do we put those into play? So I have those. The other is I made a quick little two-page summary that I actually printed off enough for everyone. The first that I have is actually a picture. It's a current picture. And this is actually a picture of the linear accelerator and the natural habitat. And then right next to it, we have West Menlo Park that obviously goes down in Daphington where you have a very monstrous green belt and a tree canopy that is very extensive. So obviously, we see what is naturally occurring down in this land and then what we've made. And so it's a matter of how do we actually learn to blend those comfortably and make something that is going to be safe for the residents in the future. So I actually put a list of things on here for you to actually look at. If you're at all familiar with TED Talks, Paul Hesford has a really good quick watch that actually kind of talks about the history of wildfires, how they occur, and kind of looking at how to address the wildfires. The other is another reading, which is called Making Transparent Environmental Management Decisions by Reynolds Hesford with the video in Bergeren. So it's actually talks about how city governments can actually look into making good transparent decisions with vegetation management. And then I personally have actually been talking to several specialists in the state of California. I've talked to John Keely, who's a scientist with USGS, Magic, professor in UCLA, William Stewart, a forestry specialist with UC Berkeley, and then Dr. Stephen Davis, a chaparral fiery college of Pepperdine University. I actually received my degree in biology under him. I got to do some of my research with this. So I'm familiar with Southern California chaparral, not so familiar with the Northern California. But one of the interesting things after talking to each of them is we need to get into an understanding of how to work with every climate that we have. There is no one answer that fits all. So it's a matter of really trying to look at what is the fire behavior in every area? What is that history? We don't know a lot of the history, unfortunately, so they are trying to look into trees that are down, see if they can look at the rings and see that fire history, what is common for this area, and actually trying to find that natural habitat, what is the natural burns that would occur, and trying to find a way that we actually need to learn to live with fire, how it occurs naturally and cleaning the debris, et cetera, and not actually trying to prevent it because now we're seeing like the bark beetles, diseases, et cetera, that are spreading due to the overgrowth, the canopies touching each other, which Paul Hesford's video actually shows a really good example of what our hills and mountains, et cetera, actually used to look like more than 100 years ago. So with that, my recommendations is actually to actually just protect the native vegetation that actually belongs here. The rest, I'm going to say, you know, can be kind of at your leisure of what you think is necessary, but the native vegetation that belongs here, I think, is what we need to look into protecting. I'd like to consider, you know, keeping trees within a 50-foot distance of structures so that we can prevent the spread of any type of the structure fire or something into that tree canopy. So that if we have a wind event or something like that, we're not risking getting that canopy spread because once it reaches the canopy, it's very difficult for us to put them on. Also allowing the removal of trees within, I'm going to say, 50 feet of power lines. We know that that has been a cause of a number of fires, so if we can actually prevent what is predictable, I think we owe it to actually try to reduce that incidence of that happening or finding a way to underground power lines, though I know that's a very expensive venture. So what are ways that we can actually promote it? And then promote wildfire protective zone for the boundaries of the community to prevent the spread from our neighboring communities. That is something that I think we'd have to explore with arborist and the natural boundaries that we have in the town. How we would do that, I'm not sure, but it's something that I'd like to explore. And then really then is promoting native vegetation landscaping, you know, being aware of the natural beauty that we have within our area, what would be here, and actually being able to encourage or promote what would be native vegetation for our landscape. That is what I have for you. I will pass out each of these. Another nap. I'm open for questions. So this is for council, this one could be for planning commission, and then-
Any questions for John? Don't want to jump out, please.
So you-
Just one. Just- John?
In your statement, you said that you would like to see eucalyptus included in the non-heritage tree list. There's lots of different eucalyptuses. What we have talked about in the past with blue-lung eucalyptus, which maybe you're referring to, but you-
For me, if it's non-native, to me, I think non-native doesn't have a plan here, but I think we could work with arborist on what exactly is something that would be more dangerous in aspects to that, but they definitely provide a different fuel load and intensity to anything that we have up there. So I would like to work collaboratively with the arborist if there's are certain species that might be worth keeping, if that's of interest, and what, and then we can provide that direction to you.
Are you going to have a follow-on question? Okay, through the chair. Regarding the eucalyptus, and I'm assuming you're talking about the giant ones that grow to, you know, 100 feet tall, really shaggy thing. I would like to, while we add them to the list of trees not requiring a permit, that just kind of gives the homeowner the opportunity to just take it down whenever they want. I would like to have some method of requiring that the removal of those giant trees be such that they're deconstructed rather than felling them on the property, like cutting them down and having them go flush like that because I had a personal experience with a whole hedgerow of eucalyptus trees being cut down with the felling method near my home, and I think it cracked the pool. I mean, I could literally feel the ground shake from my home when that was happening. And so I think that is something that we really need to be careful of because without a permit, we don't have any way to regulate how it's being taken down.
Any other questions for John?
When you mentioned eucalyptus trees, you said you had your own opinion on other trees. For our information, I'm kind of curious what your opinion is on other trees.
My opinion is protect native. If it's non-native, then I think that's something that just adds to the fuel load. I, you know, again, when looking at all of this, this is taking water from the ground sources, et cetera. I'm not sure what all they bring when it comes to promoting other diseases or et cetera. That's something that I think, you know, that we're, again, learning, but I think if you got into a drought situation, you have to stop watering, you know, I'm going to gather 75% of our vegetation around here would die because it's not meant to live here, and then we would slowly transition to that. So that's where, to me, I think we have a due diligence to actually protect our native environment, native vegetation, and then, but again, that's more of a personal opinion, but I mean, every, you know, every town has its own look and feel that, you know, it's taken 100 years to develop the town into this, but is there a way to transition and get into harmony? I don't know. That's what we're trying to learn. So that's why, you know, for myself, with my background, I'd like to find a way to find a good balance of that and protect the community the way we can naturally and still have that.
Eric, could you, John, which is next?
Sorry, I have a question about the word native. So how, is there a standard definition for that? Because you can consider native to refer to plants that naturally occur in the environment and are drought resistant, or that are native because a community chose to bring a certain species in, say, 150 years ago, 200 years ago. So to what extent do you think we should consider Atherton's history, the origins in terms of the original residents and what their vision was for the community? And then-
Well, I think you have two different approaches with that. One is obviously you have natives for what naturally would be grown here on its own. Then again, you have consideration of, well, like redwood trees. You know, redwood trees, as far as I know, were not actually here naturally. They're more on the hills and more where there's going to be fog cover. But yet, it's become, you know, definitely something that is very known down here in the Littleland area. So is that something, they obviously don't add to the fire risk, the duff that they produce, does, but trees are very resistant, as we know, to that, et cetera. So is that something that you would want to consider as a native due to history, et cetera? So maybe they're a species. But again, I think that's at your hands to work with the town arborist, et cetera, and work that out. I like to promote what's naturally here, but that's very much on the extreme. But, you know, we're seeing a vengeance swing on those things, and I think we're, it's an interesting position to be in right now.
Thank you.
Hi, Eric. I just heard-
Yeah, I had a question about the 50 foot within power lines. I'm just thinking, like, that would, you'd have to cut other tree down all the way down Middlefield, for example, and all the way down my street because the power lines are in the trees. So are you suggesting that we need to do that kind of adjustment?
So again, I'm not promoting that you actually make an ordinance as soon as they have to come down. What I'm actually thinking you recommend is that if somebody's going to pull a permit to do work in that area, then that's an item to consider that on that property, they would look into at that time, looking into remove the trees or provide some sort of maintenance that would really pull that vegetation back from those power lines so that in the event that if the tree were to be windblown, branches that they aren't going to fall or knock them down, or if the power lines were to fall, that they're not going to fall down onto a tree. 50 foot is just a number that, you know, I'm kind of looking at as a, you know, a wind kind of distance, but maybe we consider 20 feet. And it's something that the trees can remain, but we definitely look into, you know, manicuring them back to definitely lessen that risk. And I would say it's something that's going to occur over time. And, you know, we've brought this up to where we're at over the last 100 years. I think that, you know, we can look into transitioning into a safe aspect in the next 30 or 40 years by people doing full-in permits and then let's now look into just doing that. Definitely not, you know, mandating that. That would be an extreme, and I don't see that being realistic.
Okay, because I can't think of one street in Atherton that would beat that standard. Maybe I can think of three, if I-
I totally understand and-
One of the solutions, as you said, would be to underground utilities, and that's something that I think Atherton residents should be asked, whether or not that is something that they would support to not only for safety issues, but to beautify their properties. Palo Alto has underground utilities. Lindenwood has a lot of underground utilities, but, you know, to have the power lines being strong like 1926, you know, all around our houses, it seems, it seems that something that we should really take it to the voters and look at doing.
Back to questions.
Yes, on the topic you mentioned of the need for natural fires now and then to control beetles or the canopy touching or that sort of thing, does that apply here in Atherton or is that more Woodside? And if so, what do we do about it?
So that was one of the items I was looking at. So they're actually in the middle, from what I can understand, of doing research on natural fires. So they've actually been able to look at the rings of trees here in San Mateo County, though it's more in Santa Cruz Mountain areas portions, all the way back to the 1600s. And from what they can see, the fires actually occurred every 10 to 12 years.
Is that a factor for us here in this community, though?
So that's what I want to look into. Was that something that was more coastal or was that here?
Yeah.
And I'm looking to see, right now, I can't find fire history for this area of that nature. Now, there's two different things that come into play. One is a lot of those fires in that timeframe were actually, were started intentionally by the Native Indians for being able to do hunting management, trail management for their own traveling aspects and creating their own meadows and stuff so that they could hunt, et cetera. And they also did not want the large fires that, like we're seeing, so they would burn frequently. Was that healthy or not? Don't know.
Probably.
But that's something that we are aware of. So one of the things that we are aware of is like anything, again, predictable is preventable. We now have more people. We have huge amount of influx of individuals that are living out in wildfire areas that did not live there 60 years ago, et cetera. So the incidence of humans being in these areas unfortunately means an increased chance of these things occurring just due to house fires, car fires, and other items. So as that continues to increase, the increase of those things occurring, it's a numbers game. And so I, that is one of those factors that we look at is we do have a canopy here that did not occur before. So I don't know what those numbers will mean for us in the future.
So it's under study for a while yet.
In remarks to the looking at what fire frequency was, yes, I need to see-
Our yards are also manicured. I can't think that would either-
The yards are manicured, but we do have a canopy that did not exist before.
Any other questions for Eric? John, thanks. Stephanie, back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to conclude on the topic of other textual additions, at the May council hearing, there was again discussion about adding eucalyptus to the list of trees that would not require permit for removal. There was discussion that there should potentially be consideration for stronger penalties for tree violations for instances where, for removing trees or other tree removal activities without permit that are damaging heritage trees. And then lastly, direction was given to consider further revision of the ordinance as it relates to decision standards for tree removals that come to the planning commission so that those standards are more clearly articulated and specified to help aid both the community and the decision makers on those requests up the floor.
Okay. Any questions for Stephanie? And I believe this is going to be on page eight, section seven. I do have a question related to the tree evaluation form. I know that's one of your recommendations to add, pretty common practice to add it. And any more work for staff related to it?
So we could, we, so I could fill it out myself, yes, it will be left time-hitting, but then we'll have something on record. And it takes more into consideration what's around the tree. So it might make it so there's more tree removals because right now I only look at the trees, if the tree is dead or dangerous and the health of the tree. But the tree hazard form does take into account what is close to the tree, and you evaluate it more or less than that. So you can also require the plant arborist to submit it as well, as part of our package, and I can look that over and see if it seems correct. Either way, I have to visit the tree and make it look good.
In a staff perspective, if there's an issue with the tree, does it go to the planning commission first before us if there's a problem, or does it come to us? Or does it just get dealt with at the staff level?
What do you mean by if there's a problem?
I mean, if the evaluation, if the evaluation form's filled out and something happens to a tree in, let's say, neighboring parcel in two years and five years, and we go to this as a reference, what's the process?
I don't really know. I'll treat removals come to me first at staff level with either an arborist report or not. It depends if the tree's dead, I can evaluate it if it's dead. And then if I deny it, they have the chance to go to planning commission. Probably half of them go to planning commission and half of them just keep the tree. But nobody, MBS, has come back to me and said, can I reevaluate the tree? It is my understanding that we would make them apply again to try to evaluate if it's been a year or two.
We actually had one happen a few months ago that folks, I don't remember what street, they came over to us and said, hey, by the way, we're redoing these. Can we take those trees down? To your point. It, there's builders' finagle ways to try and get rid of them.
Is it benefit, is this something that can benefit the planning commission and benefit staff as well as council if we do make that requirement?
To document.
The form.
I think so. We should have that on file.
I think the city attorney also likes it to be able to document, be a little more objective in the evaluation criteria now.
Because the arborist report, most likely, I look at a lot of private arborist reports, and it could be more objective as the form is more factual also.
Eric, any questions on this section for you?
No, I just would add that one of the things we are looking at is if we do this transition on anything that we do, we're looking at having some kind of, like some kind of period, like maybe a year where the planning commission is more involved with the oversight of how it actually is deployed during that year. So we end up with a sense of how it's actually landing as we do these changes. So there's the type of thing where when we implement, the planning commission, as I felt, we talked about it, wanted to make sure we were understanding how it actually worked during that first year so we could, so we make sure that some of the things we assumed actually worked out that way.
So at the end of the year, we do a report factored to planning commission on the major changes and see if they're working.
Seems reasonable.
And that's the clarification.
Sure.
And all this is kind of predicated upon one of the earlier items that we're going to talk about is doing an inventory of the property site with photographs and, you know, a complete inventory before any work is actually. So then you have that baseline. We're kind of a little before the, we're upside down here, but I just want to make sure that that's, that will happen first.
Makes sense.
And then this other form gets up. So then it makes out a reference form.
Yeah, absolutely, makes sense. All right, Stephanie?
So I'm going to go backwards, starting at the beginning.
Back to one.
Back to one.
It was supposed to be that.
Number one, but second topic for consideration tonight, is to revise the ordinance to include more industry standard terms, the American National Standards Institute or ANI, as they're referred to, as well as best management practices in our cultural community, so to integrate those into the town's ordinance. This would address such things, for example, as tree pruning and managing trees during construction. Currently, our ordinance doesn't have anything, we just put all of that in text. So that was a recommendation by the planning commission, and on the two council meetings that we've attended, there was no further direction given specific to that topic.
Seems like a good idea.
Any further questions from anybody? Okay, move on to two.
Okay. So the next topic was a consideration of revising the town's current definition for a heritage tree. The recommendations were to revise the heritage tree definition to, first of all, take the measurement at a different height of the tree, just to be consistent with industry standards, which is four and a half feet. Our current ordinance has it at four feet. The, another component of that recommendation was to have the ordinance include some language on how to address split trunk trees as well as multi-stem trees, as there are two different kinds of trees. Again, right now, ordinance doesn't have any language. The recommendation was to include, again, referring back to industry standards for those definitions. Excuse me. And then the last component for revising the definition of a heritage tree was related to the recommendation to add redwood trees of a diameter of 15.2 inches as an additional protected tree within the buildable area of a lot. Right now, the current ordinance just has native oak trees as protected species within the buildable area. Council direction on all of those topics of discussion back to staff was to potentially not include redwood trees as an additional tree protective in the buildable area. As discussed, as the fire marshal mentioned before, it's not a native species to the town, and that may also further reduce the development potential within a lot's defined buildable area.
Okay. Any questions from anybody? Where, please.
So attached to the staff report is chapter 8.10. Is that 8.10 as it exists now? Because it looks, we were given a proposed amended ordinance, and it looks to me like some of the language that was proposed to be changed is included in this and some of it isn't. So I don't know what this is that's attached to the staff.
The attachment to the staff report is the existing ordinance with no changes integrated, no draft changes integrated.
Okay.
Second question, right. Second question is, is part of the definition of the heritage tree, there's the trees that are not classified as heritage trees? And there's a second list in the ordinance of trees that are not recommended to be planted in Atherton? And I don't understand why there's a difference between those.
So I didn't read the ordinance, or what?
No, we're, we're-
So, but-
No, we're, we're revising.
My take on it is, uh, the difference is that there are some trees that we, we would still consider protected trees. You would still have to come to staff to get a permit, but we don't recommend them being planted anymore. And then there's a list that you don't need a permit at all to receive, to, to cut down the tree. So the, the, the acacia trees, you don't need a permit. We would be adding the equipers to that list if we decided. So that would be a list where you didn't need to come to the city to get a removal application. Now, the other trees are ones where if it's over 15 inches, you would still need to get a permit, but we're not recommending you plant those anymore because we discovered that those trees were not great for the area. Does that make any of those, that make sense?
Yeah, no, that's helpful. That explains why there might be a tree on the list that's not recommended to be planted, but not included in the list that's not heritage trees.
Yeah, it's not bad enough to be, to be on that.
Right, so, so it was planted at one point and it might be a big tree now and therefore it qualifies as a heritage tree, even if that species is not desirable to plant at this point based on our judgment. It doesn't explain why there might be something that's on the list of trees that's not a heritage tree, right? That can be as big as it can be and you can remove it without a permit. But I would think all of those trees that are on that list would also be on the list that are not encouraged to be planted. And mimosa is on the list of the trees that is not a heritage tree, but is not on the list.
That was the question I had, is if we do.
So I'm, I'm just trying to clarify the different lists. It sounds like that needs to change with the, when they make it, I understand the difference.
Okay. Just because I heard Eric chiming in since he's got a disadvantage.
Yeah, I, I, I had a question about why, why there's anything other than just a heritage tree list? Because if we didn't include a, a list of oddball tree in our list of non-heritage tree, then we, we could go on forever with a list of non-heritage trees. But the only thing that we need to focus on in my mind was what's a heritage tree and everything else isn't. So, uh, and then I think there is, it is worthwhile to have a list of things that shouldn't be planted because that stops us from having problems downstream. One other thing on the redwood tree, uh, on the redwood tree, is that a tree?
Yeah. Well, we know you're walking into redwood trees.
Right, yeah. Uh, then one other thing on the redwood tree, first of all, the reason it was included was because it was a recommendation of the joint committee between the planning commission and the tree committee. The other thing is that, uh, in our, in almost all the neighborhoods where we have the trees, they are major trees in the neighborhood. So, uh, if, if we don't make them a protected tree, then, uh, then they could just be cut down. And if, I, I, I would say that that would be guaranteeing neighbors to show up on our doorstep asking what's going on. There's been several, several times in the last year where, uh, a large redwood tree was, uh, was targeted and it has a lot to do with the shielding of the neighbor and, uh, just the view, just the view that people have of the neighborhood. Of all the trees that impacts, uh, the view of a neighborhood, the oak tree and the redwood tree have the most impact. So if, if we take them off the list or don't put them on the list, then it just seems to me that people are going to do whatever they want with them and that's going to change the character of the neighborhood and that's liable to be something that presents an issue. It doesn't mean that we have to, we can't allow them to be taken down. It just means that they're on the, uh, on the heritage tree list. It has to come to the planning commission before they're taken down.
I don't think that's the issue. If I understand it correctly, as long as a tree is of a certain circumference as is designated in the heritage tree, uh, definition and it's not in the buildable area, then there has to be a permit to take it down. So it has to come before the town arborist and the planning commission. But the only issue regarding redwood trees, if I understand it here, is whether we would protect them if they're in the buildable area.
Right.
So if they're on, if, if they're a significant tree in a neighborhood and they're not in the buildable area, there's no possible way without a permit before you, the planning commission, that they could be taken down.
So my question is following on that. What, on what grounds would you be able to deny the permit? Because I totally agree with Chair Lane that if we allowed redwood trees to be cut down, it would severely impact our, uh, streetscape, our landscape. We, I mean, one of the things I think we need to be doing is encouraging people to plant more trees so that they will grow up because so many trees have been cut down either or fallen down because of age and construction. And our tree canopy, notwithstanding what the fire marshal says, you know, that we have this thick canopy. We really don't, I mean, there's a lot that's, that's missing. And I have, so my, my clarifying question about increasing the diameter, I mean, the, the height of the, um, measurement from four to four and a half. Now, would that effectively, so the taller, the taller that you measure, is that a thinner part? It seems to me that it would be a thinner part. So by increasing it by that.
Six inches.
Yes, but there's the likelihood that we're going to allow more trees to be cut down. It will not cause a disaster because of the diameter.
The, the one thing about the protected tree in a buildable area, and many times that is caused by an odd-shaped lot, all right? And then by having it a, a protected tree, we look at the positioning of the, what the, what the builder proposes, uh, and then we either get them to modify the positioning of the, of the, of the property and make a variance on the buildable area for them or allow that tree to go down because it's right in the middle of the buildable area. And, you know, that's happened, uh, a number of times when people have a smaller house and the buildable area is, is that way. So, uh, again, for, in my mind, this is not, this is not only about protecting trees, although I think that's important to the community. I think it's about the oversight of when a change happens, how do we go about doing that? Do people get notified effectively or just the tree just whacked down? Do we get to, we get to talk to the developer on a unique pie-shaped lot and say, can you do this? And that would make this work and that tree would, it's been in the neighborhood for 150 years, doesn't have to go down. So it, it's not that we don't approve the removal of these trees. It's that by having them on the list, it requires us to evaluate it. And that, and that's, that's the protective part of it.
All right, any other questions for staff? Yeah, I think, I think that, uh, what Rick was saying is there, there's a slight difference in, I mean, based on how it's written. The only real concern is within the building footprint. Really, because as everything else stands, it's applicable and you guys are going through the same measures in fact that you already are going through. And even when Chair Lane was mentioning the, a, a odd-shaped lot, which would be a, and then you guys would be dealing with it already. So would there, and there would be an exception if in fact the redwood was in the middle of the building footprint, wouldn't there?
Well, we'd always try to work with the developer, in this case with oak trees, since they're the only targeted tree protected in the buildable area, to try to redesign around the tree to the greatest extent feasible. And we've had a fair amount of success with that, at least in my few years here in working with the current town arborist. And then if that's found to not get to the point that is amenable to that developer, then they evaluate the removal of that particular tree, i.e. oak tree. So that by adding a redwood tree, you're, you're now adding another species into that dialogue for consideration.
So should ju- just keep some focus to kind of hear what the planning commission members are hopefully interjecting here a little bit related to, the issue is redwood trees within the building footprint. Is there a problem with redwood trees within the building footprint with any members of the planning commission? So realistically, we're all, I think we're on the same page related to that because everything else.
No, Paul.
Well, it's just a matter of, of evaluation. I mean, do we want to make it carte blanche that if it's in the buildable, buildable area that you can just cut it down? Or do we want to have a chance to review that? And as Eric said, work with the developer to maybe design around it if it's feasible. So I think that's what we're looking at here, whether or not we want the opportunity to review that tree in the buildable area.
So currently, in my experience with most of the wholesale divestments, all the trees in the buildable area are automatically removed because the only tree in that area that's protected is oak. So we never see any of that.
Right.
So we, me and Stephanie work with, with people to build around oak trees, but any other species is usually already removed. So I think that's why the different communities were considering, at least there would be another level of review for redwood trees. At least if, if they would have to show it on their plans, uh, so that we could start the conversation.
Okay.
Who, who can I?
So my understanding is both, I think it said in the staff report, but my recollection of the means, we, this came before the council booked in May and July. And both times the council said, don't include redwood trees as a protected tree within the buildable area. And it, I'm, it's still coming back. So I, my recollection of the reason that that was said is because redwood trees are such water dogs that they are really highly demanding of water. And, and therefore there's a different, I mean, I thought we had a different attitude about redwood trees than oak trees because of that. And I, I guess my experience is that, and maybe they've been cut down and so oak trees have been worked around, there are more oak trees that are close to the buildable area, in my experience, than redwood trees. And most of the redwood trees in my neighborhood, and there are some spectacular redwood trees in my neighborhood, they're on the border of the project. And they're, and they're a great water tree because they're such a, you know, a screen tree. And I think, for me, there's, there's sort of two or three major themes in this process that are important. I, I think the overriding one is what you said about simplifying the ordinance so that the regulations are very clear and followed, which they haven't really done. And the other is the protection of privacy. I mean, we, and the third is we want to protect our trees. Our trees are important to this town and, and, and everything we've done that's always emphasized and I think everybody agrees with that. I particularly like the redwood trees on my border because of the kind of privacy they provide. They're really valuable. I, I guess I have a different attitude about them in the buildable areas because I look at them somewhat different than oak trees because they do take so much more water. And that was a big discussion we had in terms of the civic center. And we had the same experience in the civic center. The redwood trees tend to be on the border of the project.
I'm just, can I give, Eric, I, I'm looking for your comment because your comment kind of focused on any regular-shaped lot and the impacts of redwoods. On a regular-shaped lot, what's your opinion related to redwoods within the building footprint?
Yeah, I, 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 first of all, the, the primary thing that I, I was reacting to was a recommendation from the subcommittee. That was the first thing that I, I was looking at their recommendation as the primary driver. The second was I looked at the incidences where we've had, uh, success in actually doing a better plan with the developer, maybe 12 times to the two that were appealed to the city council, that, that worked out to be a better plan. And it kept the neighbors happy because the neighbors look at those trees and say, hey, that's part of my neighborhood. So I, I think, again, the, the idea is that, uh, I, I, I just know that if, if there's a tree in the middle of a lot and somebody starts to cut it down, it, it'll create more excitement for, for, uh, staff than one that we sort of open up to discussion with the neighborhood. So I, I'm trying to do the balance between, uh, changing the, the, the standard and, uh, actually allowing the standard to change, but also keeping people engaged with the decision process so they just, they'll wink up when there's five trees gone that they've seen there for 20 years and they think that, that, you know, the lawnmower's coming down to do the ones on the, on the edge of the property. So it, it's a balance, but that's what I'm looking at. Now, I don't, I'm not like, I'm not, uh, as you know, I'm, I'm not like always pushing for redwood trees, now for palm trees, it was a lot, it's totally different experience, but, but... But, but, but it's the type of thing where I just think we got, we, we ought to be very conscious about tracking it for sure during this year. If we don't put it in the affect area, let's be aware of it and then talk about it at some, some point in this, in a specific timeframe. So we would say, one year after this, we have a joint meeting again to look at how it's going. I think that, that would be prudent, something like that.
I'm just going to say, I actually do very interested to hear sort of the opinion of the planning commission more broadly on this, on this issue. Because I heard reference to a subcommittee and I just don't know if it's probably about one or two people or we're talking about broadly as a group, I feel, I feel.
Well, Joanne and I were on the subcommittee along with, uh, Saling and, um, a couple of other members of the community. And we talked extensively about this as we are tonight and went over this quite a bit. And in the end, just to simplify it, as I, as I said, we just thought it wasn't that huge of a deal as an added layer of protection to leave it up for review, knowing that chances are the tree would come down. But as Eric said, giving the neighborhood a chance for input in that whole process. I think that's kind of the conclusion we came to as, instead of just saying, all right, we can just get rid of them in the buildable area.
And then help me out, I need to make the recommendation, the full committee, the way it works.
I'm sorry.
The subcommittee makes the recommendation, the full committee?
Right.
And is adopted by the commission, rather, and the commission adopted the whole thing?
And I would just add to that, I agree 100% that, um, we, we had conversation around the value, the aesthetic value and the kind of emotional value people have around redwoods. And that by, uh, requiring that redwoods be added to those trees that must be reviewed within the buildable area, it's, it's, it's communicating a town value around redwoods. And it really doesn't take away the property owner's ability to remove it if it's determined that it is interfering with the buildable area. So net-net, it's not necessarily adding undue burden to anyone. I think that was kind of the more theoretical philosophical aspect of how we looked at redwoods in particular.
Talked a lot about the value of the redwoods with the canopy around town, things like that. We did not discuss, um, the water consumption, which is a great point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nancy does, I didn't.
I thought we talked about the fact that redwoods, as beautiful as they are, have very shallow roots that reach for water. I, myself, we have eight of the darn things in our front yard and they are all on the perimeter and we love them, they're beautiful, but they're created speed bumps across our driveway such that we've had to replace it three times. There's big roots sticking up across our lawn, which is a sizable lawn, but there they are. And I wouldn't ever want to see them cut down. But I also think that most of the redwood trees do exist on the periphery of people's yards. And it'd be hard put to find one in a buildable area these days where the buildable area's already built upon. So it may be kind of a moot point.
I, I agree. I will say my focus is, is in kind of a twofold, in my experience in the industry, related to proximity to homes. On the borderline, really no issues at all. My concern is usually redwoods are clustered. Your, their root systems are very aggressive and they're searching for water and going anywhere near foundations is a deep concern because I've seen more houses plowed up because of redwoods proximity to a residence in smaller lot diameters than what we typically deal with. And so those are kind of two. And then in the last few years, I have a lot of redwoods near me and a little bit more in the hills. And I've watched how thinning and it's really hard because again, when clustering, they, they certainly number of feet between each tree and when you're clustered. So my concern is in a building footprint, do we want to deal with massive redwoods? And I agree and I hear the passion, you know, related to, no matter what, we're going to hear it, you know, in, in the sense of touching trees. But in a development perspective, is it fair to put a redwood in the middle of the building zone and potentially impact a potential structure that gets put into play within a reasonable proximity of a redwood?
Probably not.
That's probably not a good decision. And that's why I think that overall, our concern was related to that in the building footprint area and not anywhere else. Please, George. I just...
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with leaving it out. I just, uh, trying to respond to the, to the recommendation and also the discussion around the neighborhood input, but we can always, we can always work through that. But we can always, we can always work through that.
Okay. Public comment, whether you wanted to do, how each of these items, did you go long?
I will.
Or saw it at the end?
I will, I could do it at the end, uh, or if I see somebody that bobs ahead, I will definitely open up public comment. If something triggers somebody, I will keep my attention on three people.
Right. And then just, just some clarity with respect to the redwoods.
Thank you.
I think what staff's looking for is the feedback from the council before it comes back to you. So as a council, with respect to the redwoods, some clear focus for staff.
Um, I personally would like to keep a monitoring and, uh, what Chair Lane has mentioned. But I still, uh, think that keeping it within that building footprint, um, is still a preference for myself.
I don't know the format of this, but are, do we have, do we want input? I mean, we've got architects sitting here who can give you great input, who've done many, many homes here. Do you want it?
Sure, absolutely, I'll take, take it all.
Dude, you guys have a opinion.
You guys chime in, please.
The only thing I would say is, uh, you know, some of these older redwoods that are in the building envelope, they're, they're quite large. And when you start factoring in the new direction on tree protection zone, if you have a four-foot redwood, forty, ten times four feet is 40 feet on each side.
Yeah.
That's 80 feet of buildable envelope that goes away. And I can tell you, majority of the lots in Atherton, the buildable area is somewhere between 70 and 100 feet.
Yeah.
So it just, it eats up a lot of area.
Yeah.
And, you know, perimeter is definitely less of an issue. When you're talking about the main structure, something in the envelope has a tremendous effect.
Thank you. All right, thank you, thank you, Randy.
Sure. So Justin. I'm, I'm curious, and it sort of cuts both ways, but I heard a number of people say there probably aren't many of these trees, if any, actually out there. Is that, how do we find that out? Does anybody know?
Can I ask, so to, onto that, we asked this question on how many homes are built each year? When, when we all debated this. How many homes are built each year? How many applications do we get in the building envelope in terms of trees to be removed? I mean, it was a shockingly low number. I mean, anybody that comes to Atherton, we all know it, right? They're coming here for the trees.
Yeah, absolutely.
They're coming here for the feel and, and the, the green and, you know, the kind of the calm that I think is here, let alone with the trees. So I, I, I was surprised. Do you remember all those numbers? But it was, it was pretty low.
Again, though, any tree that was not, is not an oak tree would not have passed through the permit center per se before it got removed. So it's hard for us to calculate how many are.
Did either of you have a guess? Are we talking about like a half a dozen potential or are we talking about?
Yeah. We did, actually, I think we did a, a summary of, uh, an annual, how many trees the planning commission considers.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I can pull that up, I guess we should remember which one we don't remember, the number off the top of my head, but I can get it.
Sure, we won't, we won't distract from the other questions.
Turner, do you have more comments? Turner, do you want?
But in the five, in the five plus years I've been on the planning station, most of the redwood tree discussion has been around perimeter trees and not in the footprint.
Yeah.
Uh, much more significantly in the footprint has been oak trees, uh, because of their overhang and their split and their condition.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but the redwood has not been a dominant tree in a footprint. The only time I, I can tell you about coming up is if somebody wanted to split a lot and that it was where they, where the lot split created a new footprint.
Yeah.
So, so, uh, but it's not a, it's not a big deal, you're right.
Okay.
It's a big deal when they come down or when it, when people don't know they're coming down, no matter where they're situated in the lot. But it's not a big number in terms of a footprint space.
Yeah.
So which one is that?
Uh, to the shorter side, meaning it's not much permission. I mean, there's not probably many.
Meaning you could put it in or out, is what I'm saying.
Right, yeah. So I, yeah, I, I, you know, I get, I think that keeping, you know, having it in, uh, as far as being allowed to be removed. But I also would like to keep the tracking component of it. So if it all of a sudden becomes, we're finding that there are more of these than we are aware of.
What, what are you tracking? They can't track it if they can take it down.
Yeah. But that, with circumference wise?
No.
No, no, no.
The way I interpreted what Terry just said was if we include redwoods in this definition, then we're gonna be tracking them. But then there's gonna need to be a permit if they are interfering with the desired development because they're in the building footprint. And now we wouldn't know. We now know about the oaks. So when I look, I look at all the planning commission report and you guys look at oaks all the time.
Right.
And there's requests, you know, often to remove an oak that's gonna be in the building footprint. And you never see that about redwoods because they're not, they don't, they're allowed to be taken down if they're in the building footprint. This would start that, right? It would start that process. And I suppose one solution would be to let the, you know, make the change. And if it's a problem, then take it out.
I do have that number if you're interested. So in the course of the year, there were a total of 12 applications submitted to the planning commission for heritage tree removals. Uh, of those 12 applications, 21 trees were included. Some had more than one tree requested for removal. Um, and there were some special circumstances associated with some of those applications. For example, um, probably about a third of them were PG&E tree removals, um, due to the high-line safety initiative. Um, and we have a classified list of the lies those trees were approved and, um.
So 14 for the year?
Yeah. It's not a lot.
Okay.
So, please. What was the direction?
Uh, I.
Are they protected within the buildable zone or not protected?
I would like to hear from Elizabeth and Mike.
I, I think, uh, the planning commission analyzed this at much longer length than we're doing right now. And I agree with their recommendation. I would support that.
Mike.
Back like that in the same place is only in the, in the sense that if there aren't that many trees, at least we'll learn from this experience.
Right.
And we'll, and we'll be able to make a decision more informed as to the changes we made.
Sounds reasonable. So we'll be able to track them.
So you're adding them to the protection.
Yes.
In the buildable area.
Correct. So, yeah.
For all the reasons that airs.
Yeah.
You'd like to see that in the next iteration.
Because if we didn't bring the neighbors, it's open up a conversation, you know?
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay, uh, I have another three, please.
So this, uh, next topic was the one that probably triggered the most conversation, both at planning commission and the council levels. And this had to do, um, with amendments to the town's existing tree protection zone or called it the TPZ. Again, the TPZ is a special, specified measure that says how much of a protection area around a tree, based on its size, needs to occur. Right now, the current, um, tree protection guidelines state that a heritage tree has a required TPZ of one foot for every inch of that tree's diameter. So that equates to 12 times the tree's diameter. So a 20-inch tree requires a 20-foot TPZ. Um, the planning commission's, um, recommendation on revisions to that standard, uh, were to reduce that TPZ from, again, the existing 12 times diameter, um, to, uh, a 10 times tree diameter. With the exception that that be further reduced down to eight times for specific types of construction. I.e. driveways, fences and/or walls. CMU walls, service fences or other types of retaining walls. So the council direction that, um, was received based on their conversation, their conversations of a TPZ reduction, was that those recommendations, uh, may still potentially be too restrictive for development and that, uh, staff should conduct some further analysis related to, um, a TPZ for smaller lots, whether those be in our R1B or, uh, R1B zone lots or even smaller lots in the predominant R1A, so the districts throughout town. Um, and then further direction was that any amendments to the ATPZ carefully consider the regulations so that they are consistent and fair and not overly restrictive, um, to development and making it so that a property is unable to build and/or depriving that property of substantial use of it.
Okay. Um, please, questions for staff?
One of my comments on page five at the top. It, after I read all of this about, you know, reducing to 10 feet, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, that it is important to note that 3X is the critical root zone. Right? I mean, so, I, I, that's what I think we were really, I mean, is it 3X? If you get too, you know, closer than that, the tree's definitely gonna die. Or if you get to 5X, will the tree die? Or?
So the ANSI standard is a TPZ zone of anywhere between six times to 18 times. And that depends on the, the species, the age and the health of the tree.
Okay.
And most species in town, we do, um, we don't have that many species in town. So, uh, coastal liveoaks and redwoods, they take construction impact better than, than, um, valley oaks and incense cedars. Uh, and so when is, if, if you're looking at matured trees, which I think we should be looking at matured trees, not young trees or over mature. Um, but if we look at matured trees, then for trees that can take construction impact, it's suggested that you do it eight times at the TPZ zone. But for trees, uh, that are moderate to construction impacts, it's 12 times. So the fact that we were bringing it to 10 times was making a compromise between the two so that we don't have to have a different TPZ zone for other species.
Yeah, this, this is the section that causes to evaluate the whole, the whole, uh, uh, ordinance. Because what was happening is we were discovering that it was 12 by was not regularly enforceable and what in fact historically had not been consistently enforceable. So we said, okay, either have a rule or, and follow it, or don't have a rule. But the way we're doing it right now is the, is the least, least preferred. The other thing is, these numbers are basically your, your, you know, modulating risk. So if you had 50 wide or 50 times, you'd, you'd likely not bother the tree. If you had three wide, you'd definitely bother the tree. If you had six or eight or 10, you're adjusting your probability of causing a problem with the tree. So what we were, what we did is we, we went back over all the plans that we had approved for the previous year, or many of the plans, I think it was all but many. And we, and we did a footput, a footprint analysis of what would be the impact on each one of these, uh, each one of these, uh, plans, if it were eight or 10 or 12. And first of all, you know, it, it, uh, it, it, at, at the 12 level, it made impact on a lot of different plans. On the, on the 10 and eight, it didn't seem to. So that's, so what we were looking at is how much risk to a tree do we want to, uh, uh, burden on it by reducing the proximity? So if we go to eight, many trees will live and some will die. If we go to six, more trees will, uh, will die and some will live. So that's what, that's, all we were trying to do was say, okay, what would be a, uh, a, a lower level that we felt comfortable, uh, with a survival rate for trees and yet it more consistently, uh, uh, deployed?
Okay. Um, at the time you guys were considering the planning commission, considering, were you considering this, uh, R1A, R1B lots? At all, the smaller lots in the standard with 10 times?
We had one example of an R1B because we had only one R1B property that, that didn't consider it in the last year. So not to be accepted.
If I remember right, on the ad hoc committee, we did not discuss that extensively. Um, we really relied on Sally's professionalism, the ANSI standards. And then she had a list of, uh, surrounding communities and what their TPZs are. And I'm not a tree guy. But as Eric would tell you time and again on the planning commission, it's about making sure everybody gets a law and good neighbors and things like that. So I looked at it from a standpoint of balance and compromise. And how can we reduce it, make it less restrictive? And at the same time, protect the trees within reason without having the different standards as Sally just mentioned a few minutes ago, eight, 10, 12. And through a lot of discussion, that's how we came up with 10.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Any members of the public would like to make a public comment on this one? TPZ 10 times versus 12?
I'll make a public comment. My name is John McHutahan.
Hi, John.
Um, good evening. So, um, in my experience, it just depends on what you're going to restrict in that TPZ. The last tree committee meeting we had was pretty frustrating because I found out you could put landscape walls all the way down the side of the property with regular spread footing with no concern for the tree. So if you're gonna have a TPZ and you're gonna let that happen, it almost seems like it's not viable. Especially with all those remnants on the perimeter.
And when you refer to wall, are you referring to a CMU wall?
Stucco, CMU, anything with a footie. So arborists get sensitive around the tree. So if I can't put a house within 40 feet of a tree, but I can make a trench and chop off all the roots right next to it, it doesn't make any sense. From my perspective.
Well, that shouldn't be allowed.
So.
Yeah, I think we're, I think.
Lights out, he didn't write the ordinance.
But I, yeah, I think that's something we're discussing.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, and when you talk about other towns, I think, um, I don't know any, but, any town that holds anybody at a distance of 10 times the diameter away from the tree. I know that they say that's the tree protection zone and then they ask for the arborist report to allow what kind of encroachment that is. And then that arborist report is peer reviewed. So when I do that in Atherton, Sally is peer reviewing it. And, and then determining whether or not that should be approved or not. And then in the sticky ones, I try to give her an area of the root, root zone that will be impacted. So we, we drive architects crazy by asking them to do all kinds of calculations to effect to figure out how much of the root area is being impacted and how much can I tree tolerate? On a, on a case-by-case basis, because every lot is a little bit different. Sometimes I'll tell them, a certain percentage of 12 times the diameter, uh, or, or I might, uh, so one day it might be, you know, a higher number and one day it will be a lower number based on what the current circumstances are around that tree. So I, I think if you get hung up on 10 times the diameter or eight times the diameter, it's gonna be a real challenge. I think it really takes it for granted what that really means, especially when you figure out the grading and drainage utility plans and your landscape plans.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
So where does hand digging around roots for your drainage, you know, your, for your utility chase? I mean, if you, if you have to take your utility from the street and run it back, but there are all these big trees along your perimeter or whatever, I mean, can't you do hand digging and then put your utility lines around it?
Yeah, that's actually thanks to Sally, a requirement in Atherton.
Yeah.
Probably one of the only places that it actually happens or has a chance to happen during the utility installation where, 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 uh, the plans that go through the process between her and David over there in the office, they have, the civil engineers have to show on their plans where the hand or air digging is required. So, um, and they have, they'll highlight out where the tree protection zone is and they'll do a special hatching along that facility trench to show where the hand or air digging is required.
Gotcha. Sally, just a point of clarity. When we're talking about a 10-time, um, tree protection zone and we have a six times for an existing driveway and a three times or six times or three times for a driveway that is existing and one that is already in play, well, three times for already in place, excuse me. Is that 10 times, are you trying to, is that applicable? Is the planning commission's, the thought theory, one 10 times tree, but not subsections of six times and three times when you're near a driveway? Because I can see a tree.
Yeah, the committee came up with the 10 times number, but because of all the feedback we got from the council, we, we look back and we decided to make different numbers because of R1B and because of driveways and all the road run up. And so those, that's where those numbers came. So those do go through the planning commission, those are the start.
Okay. So in a, in a planning commission question, uh, your. So in a, in a planning commission question, uh, your perspective on, I get the ten times, I don't think that that's really an issue, but the changes when consideration for an existing driveway, new driveway, at three times and ten times? Can I get a little feedback, six times, excuse me, and three times? In a planning commission perspective, instead of a flat ten time perspective, but having some degree of flexibility, uh, in areas that have...
I think it's reasonable, absolutely.
Randy?
Um, John gave an actually interesting answer when we had our planning commission meeting about, because if you compare us to Redwood City, Melma Park, Palo Alto, where you have much smaller lots, maybe they're eight, ten, twelve, fifteen thousand, you don't have the option to go as a ten time, right? That's not even a question, un- unless you don't want to build anything on that lot. So, we were trying to do about, and John, you might, if you remember, that came up, and I, I don't remember who asked you, maybe me, but, is how, how do you handle that in other places? Our goal is not only the, the safety of the, the, the tree and then the, the community, but also how do we make this simple for staff so this doesn't become this, you know, pulling your lip over our forehead thing? So, that's kind of always the way we look at it, but that doesn't mean we're always gonna be the people sitting in these seats or that they will forever. So that's how we kind of approach it. So, John, you might answer that, because I don't, I, I, I remember you gave an interesting answer to it.
Give you the difference between the size of the lots here and...
Yeah, I mean, how, how anyone would ever build on some of those where they're much more constricted too.
Yeah, but I'm not building forty thousand square foot houses over there in the heart of Palo Alto.
Yeah.
So, your scales just go up with the size of the house, so I, I think that would probably like...
Well, most houses here aren't forty either, I mean, right?
What's that?
I said, most of them here aren't forty.
Most of them are, but, you know...
They're fourteen.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, a nine thousand square foot basement is becoming one more common.
Yeah.
So, um, so, yeah, so basically, it is, when I talked to Sally about this and some people in tree committee, you have tree preservation as the goal, we wanna buy more space for the trees. So, that's, it doesn't matter if it's Melma Park, or Palo Alto, or, or Atherton, or if you have an acre or not an acre, or if you have a six thousand square foot lot, the root area is the root area. So, um, there's a lot of ways to now, to, to try to come from Atherton underground using ground for the tree to regulate. So, I don't remember the specific, specific answer I gave at the planning commission meeting, but if you wanna protect the trees, the, the process is getting way better in Atherton than it is, in my opinion, in some of the other communities. Because literally, people like you are, are going beyond what the normal is fifteen, twenty years ago in any town, and they're designing better around the trees and giving the trees more space. So, um, it, it is true that forty feet is a lot different when a lot's only forty feet wide, or fifty feet wide. So that, that is a, a huge limitation, but I've read within Melma Park and Palo Alto.
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to, uh, wrap my hands around, I mean, a lot of their, a lot of this has connectivity into other topics, like mapping things out and as things will move forward. And it's hard to think these things, I mean, digging, hand digging, and everything else, but if all these come into play, there's a bigger process in saving the, the extent of the quality of the root system. Staff did a very good job at making sure it had some flow to it. Um, but I'm trying to give a little breakdown of the planning commission's consideration, did not have a consideration, because I understand that this wasn't something that you guys had. So the reduction down to smaller lots at a six times factor, does the, do members of the planning commission have an issue with that?
We, we just did the one standard.
Right.
Because there was only one app, it had had an impact, so.
Maybe it had an issue today.
I think we kicked it to you guys saying, hey.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a problem with it on the smaller, well, I don't have a problem with, with six by as long as they say the six by.
Right.
You know, what I had a problem with the twelve by, and we weren't following it.
Yeah, okay.
So, if we go, we go ten, eight, six, three, and we know how to reapply them, that's all I'm looking for, because now I can look at, uh, somebody of the straight face who comes into Melma Town and buys a, buys a property, and says, why can't I build it this way? And I'll say, because this is the way that we consistently, uh, implement.
Okay.
And that's all I, I'm, what I'm looking for is consistent.
Okay. Okay, please, Elizabeth.
I, I agree with Eric, because I don't think one size fits all.
Right, right.
I don't think we could just say, you know, ten X and that's it. It, I think that you've got to have the flexibility.
The one thing about flexibility, though, is you have to have defined flexibility, like, when do I get to do three, when do I get to do six?
Exactly.
Because, because if we have this thriving scale, then we end, but then we get this chaos all the time. So if you say it's five by driveway, it's six, and if you buy, that's fine, but it, uh, what was going on for a while was with twelve, but we can't do it like eight, and, you know, that's not the way to do it.
Okay. Thank you, Rick, please.
Three comments. Uh, I was influenced by the staff comment in two or three places that this recommendation is consistent with ANSI standards and neighboring jurisdictions. But it sounds like it might not be consistent with neighboring jurisdictions, seeing as how our lot sizes are larger than our neighboring jurisdictions. Now, maybe that, maybe that applies just to wood side.
For the smaller lots.
But, I, I, I'd like to know what those, you know, uh, uh, T P Z standards are in neighboring jurisdictions, that would be helpful. So that's one. Two, I, I agree with the comments that there's a difference in the smaller lot sizes for those areas in Atherton where, you know, the lot sizes are well below an acre. Um, and I think we should have a different standard for those. Uh, and, um, and the reason that I think that, well, I think that's fair, but I also, uh, what Eric said is important. The, the biggest problem for me with the standard that we have now is that it's not followed. And we need to establish something that's reasonable that the developers can work with, and if they have a problem, they can come to Sally and work with that. But, right now, it sounds like they would have a problem all the time. So, uh, I don't, and I don't know if eight or ten, you know, which of those is better, uh, for the developers. Uh, and I would be influenced by that if I knew it.
Exactly.
Three, three is better for the developers.
The third thing that I think is, um, I feel quite differently about what the requirement is when you're on the perimeter of the property putting up a fence. I, I don't want to have a standard that makes it not possible for people to put up fences on their property lines, that's the wrong thing. I don't have any problem, uh, requiring that people put up a fence that doesn't have a footing that's gonna damage the, the root. So if they, if they can't put up a C M U fence, but they can put up, you know, a metal fence or, or a, a wood fence, then I don't have a problem with that at all.
Um, Eric, I know you were chiming in a little bit when Rick, Rick was talking, anything you wanted to add or comment on?
Well, I was, I was just saying that for a developer, three by is the best thing, because I, I can build, you know, I can do what I need. And I think the other thing is, is the nature of the person buying into Atherton is changing. So we get more requests for like, can I just come in and clear cut this thing, because all this stuff is overgrown, than we had during the first year that I was on the planning commission. So we're getting a different kind of buyer, they want the more open lot look and feel. So I think that's kind of what we're also experiencing too, is the new buyer is different than the residents now. And so, the, the fact that we could come up with a plan that says, okay, if, if we went by eight, if we went to eight by, for example, and watched it to see if the trees do live, then the, the developer would have a, a significant increase in, in, uh, flexibility on the way the property is used. Right, just over twelve. It also would lower the number of questions to, to staff about what, what, what can we do, because it's, it's got more space to it. So, again, it's, the idea of, you know, we went back and forth and looked at all the different things, did all the different maps and all the different footprints, and then looked at the recommendations from the, uh, subcommittee in terms of, of the recommendation. The subcommittee recommended a ten. We looked at eight, and said, ah, eight looks like, like it should be, but I thought it's a big step from twelve to eight, uh, as a percent of change. So, we, we went with the ten, I, well, I'll sit, I'll speak for me. I went with the ten based on the recommendation and the fact that it looked like a good step forward that we could actually deal with. I, I'm comfortable going to eight, if, if we're gonna go to eight, and then have a special one, because if you, if you look around every fence in the, uh, in town, there's no, there's no twelve that I've seen anywhere, there's a lot of threes. So, you know, the, the idea of nearer driveway or nearer fence makes total sense to me, and, and the idea that when it's within this far away from the fence, it can be this, that's fine, but if it's just to be, uh, if that's not defined well, then it's like, well, yeah, it's, I call it a defense tree, and it's thirty five feet away from the fence. So, we just wanna have it crisp and enforceable, and much better than it is today, because right now, a developer comes into a twelve by and we start working with them, and in many lots, that's not a, that's not a big issue. Um, uh, but if we go to eight or ten, you know, uh, we risk, we risk some trees that don't get risked now, but probably not a significant risk change. The other thing that's a factor is how the tree's taken care of, what kind of dirt it's got, or what kind of soil it has, all these other things that go into, um, you know, making a tree live.
Yeah. Um, Mike, anything to do with that?
No, I, I, I think people have said, I, I do wanna thank, um, staff, that we actually listened to what we said and responded to it last time, and I appreciate that. Um, so, just something for my colleagues, um, Eric was mentioning a reduction down to eight, um, or potentially, I mean, let's just say it. I'm actually comfortable with taking a step, as, uh, Eric had mentioned, and also implementing these other variable factors and monitoring, but giving that as the guideline, the staff's recommendation within this. Because I think in the big picture, as we continue to move forward here, this is like getting back and down into other things when we talk about some things later on, that I think's gonna make sense on how we take these steps, if that makes sense. So, I, I don't know if my colleagues agree with that, but, and I see a better...
I just have a question, are you recommending that we, that it's either ten, a blinded, or eight blinded?
No, no, it could be eight blinded, it's something I just...
But I didn't think that we were gonna do just the one size fits all, there's different variations.
I don't think this says one size fits all. This says, based on driveways, we have a different T P Z. Based on an existing driveway, we have a different T P Z. Based on a lot area of X, we have a different T P Z. I'm just going based on the staff reported, there's different variables of tree T P Zs identified in the staff report.
Any other tier to that, if I could?
Please.
Adding in, um, a potential recommendation to allow for a staff level exception to all of those tiers, based on very specific criteria off of, I'll call it industry standards, um, to address those unique case by case situations that right now, there, there's, there is no envelope to review them with. It's just a discussion between project owners and arborists, so to clarify that.
Please.
Thank you. Well, along those lines, uh, you know, we, we've run into certain issues recently with utility easements, having to bring utility lines from the rear of the property going through T P Z zones. We're, we're forced to dig these trenches, I mean, you can hang, hand dig some of them, but you can't hand dig all of them. And between utility trenches or some of the detention or retention systems that the city is mand, or the town is mandating that we, we put in, I mean, there's all these other factors that, as, I'm not gonna use the word developer, I'm an architect, and I do work for a lot of different people. But, you know, these are everything else that we have to consider when we're designing a, a home or the property itself. So, getting back to flexibility, my, I'm always stressing having flexibility for these circumstances that do come up. You know, it's one thing to design a house, but it's the other thing to get all this infrastructure into these properties.
Thank you very much, and, and really, thank you very much for bringing that up. Um, I actually have been attending the contractors forum, and that, that, what he's just saying has been something that's been mentioned for the last six to eight months since this topic has been up. And so I'm glad he said it, and I would hope that we would have some degree of flexibility for those issues. And is that kind of what you're saying related to...
Yes, yes, and that, from what I'm hearing from our building department in Town Arborists is that those infrastructure needs are also enlarging because of the, the larger house size that Shirley was referencing before. So those detention systems or those, um, transformers are, is the space of those to accommodate the associated house service to increase the etc.
Okay. Um, so, with that, I, I mean, with the degree of flexibility that staff's mentioning related to those concerns, um, is it okay, or is everybody reasonably good with the ten times T P Z with the flexibility that staff has identified here? Does that seem like a reasonable direction? Again, I think we're going to be reviewing this in twelve months to see how that, you know, how this works.
Eight, ten?
Eight or ten months?
Ten months. Eight or ten? You said eight before, and then...
You said eight before, you just said ten.
I, I said, yeah, I kind of followed with the, the planning commission's recommendation, ten, um, because that's how it's identified here.
I, I, if I heard Sally say that, that the ANSI norms are somewhere between six and sixteen, is that right?
Six and eighteen, yeah.
Six and eighteen, I mean, eight feels to me pretty close to the minimum, and ten feels a little more like a...
Kind of a mid-range.
A mid-range, I'm more comfortable with ten, not being an expert, but I just, yeah.
My understanding about the process here is that staff is gonna take this and come back with something we're then going to implement.
Sure.
So, this isn't waiting ten months, this is a month or whatever it takes staff to put it together, we're gonna revise this ordinance.
Right, well, what I think, what I was saying...
And, and therefore, these, these, uh, compromises below whatever the standard is are gonna be spelled out.
Sure.
Yeah.
But either way, it'll be removed wherever they review it.
And it's gonna be further spelled out in the next item that we're gonna go to really quickly, aren't we?
Yes. I was just trying to make sure that there's an understanding, whatever gets really changed, it'll still be looked at in ten months.
Yeah.
Yes. That's what I was saying, that's what I was saying to you, or all of us. So I mean, if we're all okay with ten times T P Z, the modifications related to the R one A and R one B, um, the driveway implementations of three times and six times, as well as, we're gonna be talking about the fence line issue in the next section, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, and just, I'm jumping ahead, we, actually, number four. Uh, we just sort of, I've talked about number five, I think, um, already in terms of the exception request process.
Yeah.
Um, at the staff level, defined criteria, um, are used different scenarios. Do you have something else?
I think the staff level exception's important.
Yeah, that's very important.
Okay, so now we go back.
So, that's about five, are you on five?
Eric, please, yes, so five, please speak up, not the...
I, I just didn't wanna, I, I didn't understand what the comment was on five.
Uh, that, the discussion that we were having related to three, which was initially specific to what that T P Z number was, and the conversation evolved into number five, and it's...
Okay.
No, because this is specifically, I'm talking about moving a heritage tree.
Um, this is talking about additional process, some of that process is related to specifically the tree protection zone, and, correct, it also speaks to another topic, which would be the moving of a heritage tree, which right now, the ordinance is silent upon.
No.
So here's the, here, here's the, which is the...
We've had an occasion of tree remove, uh, relocations, and we would consider those as a true removal permit, because we're not guaranteed the tree's gonna survive.
Right.
So that's how we process it today. So this would formalize current process, that's in the head.
So, so here's a question I have on five, and it, and so this, this is one, this is, uh, one section that wasn't brought before the planning commission, before we made our, uh, uh, recommendation, uh, as I recall anyway. Um, this is the part that I actually don't, I don't agree with. Um, the way I would specify that it would work would be that we have the, the, the T P Zs that we just talked about, the ten, six, three, whatever it is. And then if there's an exception, rather than being this process where it's negotiated at the staff level, it's brought to the planning commission for, uh, the discussion and, and whatever the result is there. Because this, this clause here creates this wiggle room in the, in the process flow, there's this process, uh, on three that is very direct and very controlled, and there's this process, you might, you might trip into a five or whatever. So, I, I'm not comfortable having both. So either we have our, the rules, and then we say, well, if you don't like those, let's talk to the planning mission. Or, or you have, oh, whatever you wanna negotiate with the staff, and then, you know, if you really don't like staff, then, then, then it comes to the planning mission. But, I, I kind of felt like the way that staff gets backed up by the planning commission is by having rules that when they don't get, uh, that when they don't get agreement, it's brought to the planning commission to discuss it and... it's brought to the planning commission to discuss it, and then that gives them the backup they need. This number five opens up a negotiating process that actually doesn't back up staff very well, in my opinion.
Staff, love to hear that. Any comments? They'll all jump out.
I mean, the criteria would have to be very specific, utility easements. It wouldn't just because the house needs to be bigger. It would have to be, we would have to come up with criteria. For me to make the exception, why they need to be less than what everybody else is able to do, um, which, which would have to be very specific. And not just, not just based on aesthetics or...
From a legal perspective, it's really the same kind of criteria that, that planning commission would have to be looking at. It's not just because it's Wednesday night and we feel happy this week, and we're gonna approve everything. There have to be stated criteria that, that the public, the architects, the developers, the builders, everybody can look at and see. And, and that's why we looked at, we were kinda happy, starting at the staff level, because then it gives at least a professional perspective and a back and forth between their arborist and our arborist. And where there's discrepancies or differences, then we have a, a panel of people that are really more laypeople than the expert people, that can listen to them and sort of like a jury. And, and we thought that was probably a better system than just having staff do it, you know, willy-nilly without criteria, which is kind of the way it looked when it first came forward. And so, we wanted to have that criteria in there, which I think will also help the planning commission understand why staff is going in a certain direction, or why the, their, the developer is going in a direction.
So, here's the, here's the issue I have with that, is that historically, I can't tell what happened in the, in the negotiations. So, when somebody appeals from them, or it comes before us, the six, the six or seven times that it moved from an eight to a six, or a six to a five, it was done at staff level with a discussion with the developer, and the lot, things like that. There's no real visibility to that for the planning commission at all. So, then, when it comes to the planning commission, it's like, it, it's like, oh, by the way, this, they're, they're not allowing us to have eight, six, or five. And, and we're sitting there going like, well, what's the criteria? And then, it, it's a long storyline that we haven't been part of up until a time that lands in front of us. So, I, it's not that I don't trust staff, it's that the history of why a decision was made isn't, isn't very clear when it gets to us. Whereas if it's, these are the rules of, of, of it, and then staff comes and says, you know, I looked at this, and the power line needs to this, and this this, and this is what I recommend. We approve those all day. And so, when, that, the flexibility is that we will, we will take staff's recommendation, but we go on record with this consistency. When it's not on record publicly, it's not necessarily captured, a, a consistency that we can, we can support.
So, Eric, I'm, I'm just trying to chime in a little bit. Are you asking in a staff report to have the historical history related to what the item you're trying to hear, that, that staff can provide that? Is that, is your issue really just more clarity of what the history of the actions that staff took that you guys wanna be aware of at the time you guys are getting at the planning commission?
No, no, my, my request would be that we have standards of ten, ten, six, three, like we have on, on number three. And if it's outside of those criteria, then it comes to the planning commission. Now, that, that doesn't happen very often, uh, because if we have, first of all, we're doing twelve now, so a doc, the rock down to ten, six, and three is a major change in the flexibility. So, that, by itself, is one major change that I personally wanna monitor what the impact of that is. If we have that and this change with the flexibility on it, uh, at the staff level, I'm not gonna be able to tell where ten, six, and three is working or not. Uh, because I can't, it's because it's ten, five, five, six, and it, there's, there's a lot more variable when you do both of these than if we just do one. And going from tw- from twelve to six in certain instances is a major change that, you know, I think we're responsible for monitoring.
So, I have a few things to add.
Please.
So, the staff level exception would require an application and a fee.
Right.
It's just extra time and, and doing an extra set of review. And the idea of the extra fee would be maybe higher for a person to do, inspect the sites more often than I can, um...
Contract. Contract person, please.
Contract person, yes. Part-time, because the application fees would pay for that.
Okay.
So, it's, it's touching a few different things. So, the, the history could be, the, um, it would be a public document, because they would apply, have a certain type of application, right? Why are the reasons why they need the exception? So, that would be documented, and why I denied it or I approved it.
So, Sally asked that, how, how many applications would you expect? I'm sorry, I thought it was a little smaller than...
Everybody would apply for the exception.
Pardon?
Everybody would apply for the exception.
Everybody would?
Yes.
But how many do you normally deal with on a heritage, how many heritage trees a year per se?
As many contracts I do every day. So, if I do five contracts a day, then I'm dealing with somebody that wants an exception five times a day.
To every tree, five times a day? I can see why.
Because, because the new sites know, they come to me and they ask, well, can I remove all of the trees? And if I can't, which ones can I remove? So, if we're just starting from, you know...
Stage one. Gotcha. Rick, please.
Great. That just threw me, so, what you typically get is a request to remove all the trees?
Yes.
From every property?
Pretty much, yes. But people that do know, but people that do know the rules don't come to me like, come to me, 'cause they know I wanna approve all of the trees. But anybody that's buying new in town or new developer, yes.
Elizabeth, please.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to prevent, by having some real specific criteria. And I think that that would answer Eric's concerns about not, you know, when they come to the planning commission, because, you know, if they've been following these criteria, and you have criteria to, uh, go back on and say, this is, this is, we're not treating you any differently than we treat the next person. This is it, this is it, this is it. But if Sally can, if there's exceptions because of something that's reasonable or rational, then that can be implemented and convinced. I don't know, I think that we just really need to be very specific, and I think you've, you've kind of put that together there, more so than just a twelve X, right? I mean, right now, it's just a twelve X.
Yeah.
But, I'm assuming you're specific in the criteria that, that gives discretion to staff, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Rick, please.
So, that, yeah, that, that's exactly what I'm, so, I thought that the, the specific bullet pointed examples in the staff report on, you know, going from ten to eight, from eight to six, and from six to five, depending on the different situations, was very well stated and made sense to me. I mean, I, I don't have any particular judgment, but it seemed to make sense, and, and I, I'm not sure what the debate is. I, I wouldn't want every one of those exception requests that you have to deal with five times every day to come to the planning commission, that makes no sense to me. And we, we don't wanna burden the planning commission with that. We wanna set up criteria that developers are gonna follow. I, I would've said, and homeowners, but given what you just said, you know, maybe the, I don't know, there, it's a different breed. But, uh, I think this, this criteria makes sense, and I assume what you're suggesting is that if, um, someone doesn't agree with your judgment, then it would come to the planning commission. And, and so...
But what's more likely to happen is that somebody will go through this process in five, and somebody will go through the process in three and not use the process in five, and go, wait a minute, how, why did that, why didn't I get the six by and eight, and I got an eight by? So, uh, you know, by having, this is two sets of criteria, all right? And so, it, it, and that's, and so, we won't be able to identify root cause of what's, of what's killing trees if, if this happens, all right? Because some of them will be around the, of the criteria in three, and some of them will be around the criteria in five. And we'll have these two sets of data, and then we'll flip back to one that was twelve before, which was radically, uh, uh, more conservative, and we won't be able to see the, see the transition in terms of what, what works best. This criteria in five is a separate criteria, it's a more flexible criteria than, than three. So, if we wanna go with five only, or three, but not both, I'm okay. But the, but the, the, the fact of the matter is, if you have the three sets of ten, six, and five, then you've got, oh, well, then why don't I just go for the eight, six, or the ten, six, three? Why don't I just go with the eight, six, five group and see if I can get better, a better deal there? It creates this negotiating against herself that doesn't make sense to me.
So, this would only be in certain unique circumstances, but we haven't, we haven't flushed those, those criterias out. This would not be, it would be, again, I'm coming back to utility easements, or, or...
I don't know, Sally, I think you've gotta make it really simple. It's gotta be really simple and straightforward, and then with the caveat of certain circumstances, that would then be your judgment. And not maybe even stipulate, under those certain circumstances, what the, uh, TPZ zone number would be.
Just to get clarity, why, uh, could they not be the same? TPZ, what, what Eric just mentioned?
Yeah.
Why couldn't they be consistent? I'm just curious.
Between three and five.
Three and five together. Can you bridge those into one standard?
Or if everybody's having an arborist on five, is new five and use three?
I think so, and then she would have the...
And it went back to my attention after, the TPZ seemed too restrictive, so this was an idea that the town came up with to, at least, that there would be some type of exception for the unique circumstances, so...
This never came to us. So, if it started, it started with you, with us.
Through council recognition.
It's our problem.
That's what we're trying, that's why we're trying to fix it.
Well done.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Uh, I, I, you know, to, to Eric's point, so why don't we just make numbers consistent?
Yeah. Go back to three as the baseline.
Just to interject, I think the five times...
Yeah.
Was limited to the R1A and B, where you have to reduce...
Yes.
Yeah, diameter down to six.
Yes.
And so, the five is solely saying, in the unique circumstance for those R1A and B lots, there's a one-time diameter allowance for flexibility. It's not associated with the three at all, it's solely tied to the R1A and B lots.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're sticking with, on those lots, you've reduced it. The previous item was to have that at six times?
Six times, right.
And so, if you want flexibility at the staff level, the flexibility is recommended to be limited to that one by diameter.
Yeah.
If you wanna keep it as rigid, it's recommended to stay at six.
Well, I know, I think that that would make sense, because, you know, we have different, we have different variances for different sizes of lots, anyway. And so, it'd be, it'd make sense to carve that out as a separate item.
You, you're back, that's three you're talking about.
You're trying.
No.
No, well, see, it's in five.
The three times diameter was limited to existing driveway.
I don't, I don't, okay.
You're saying item number three?
I don't, I don't remember. I mean, I don't, sorry. So, what I'm finding is confusing, I mean, it's, it makes perfect sense to me, by the way, that there would be defined criteria by which staff would exercise discretion on limited things that don't need to go to the planning commission. I don't think we've gotten any specificity beyond that. I mean, you haven't yet drafted those. So, I don't really understand, well, how we're able to have a real conversation until we gotta look at those, but it makes perfect sense to me that if there's a class of things that shouldn't go to the planning commission, that are kind of, you know, appropriate for staff to decide, that staff should have that discretion. Yeah, that just is the way it comes to me.
I think, I think it's here on page seven in, in item number five.
Correct.
Those three items here.
Well, those are illustrative, I don't think you have to be covering the criteria right.
Sally, Sally talking about some that I think might be important, like the species of tree, health of the tree, those kinds of things might, I mean, she talked about them early on. I'm not even sure which number we were talking about.
The point is to have it been flushed out.
That's why they're flushed out, yes, yes.
So, those kinds of criteria and others might be what you need to be looking at.
Yeah.
All right.
We can't let us say the fact that we're talking about preserving the life of the tree.
Yeah.
The tree doesn't know it's sitting on a small lot. It doesn't know about somebody wants to build a house or a gazebo or something there. So, our decisions should be based on what's best for the tree, which Sally's the best judge of.
Yeah.
It's a little hard for us to say, like, the species of the tree, the age of the tree, and all other factors are gonna come into it too, but the bottom line is, we wanna preserve the tree.
Yeah.
Do what's safe for it.
And just a clarity point, you have the discretion in there, or do you want more concrete in having an on-site inspection?
It's one of the recommendations, it's added now.
I think that's reasonable. Yeah. Then we'll know more. Okay. Six.
Wait, did we do four?
Four, no.
Oh, you're going back to four?
So, this topic does not include what that TPZ distance should be, whatever that final number is, but what activities, whatever that defined number is, should be permitted or prohibited in that upper zone area.
Yeah.
Providing specificity of trying to be all-inclusive of all types of development activity that occur beyond just the construction of the gazebo or the house with the pool, such as irrigation lines, trenching, et cetera. On that topic, there was some council direction for staff to really delve into the ability to address the issue of new driveways or other kinds of hardscape improvements, patios, compacted ground surface, and how that will be considered as it relates to its, those types of, um, construction and the proximity of heritage.
Okay. Any members of the planning commission want to join? Counselor? Jump out. Um, go ahead, Rick, please.
I just think it's important that we have real clarity of what is permitted and what isn't permitted. I think it's really important.
Yeah.
And, um, from what, what I've seen, it looks like the recommendations are good.
I, I think that our council direction, the paragraphs below what was the permitted and prohibited, uh, just flushes out, um, contextually, um, what is prohibited. And it does talk about, um, the construction of a good neighbor fence that would prohibit the construction of a fence from damaging or disturbing a heritage tree. And so, I think that the ordinance should have more, um, narrative, more text, that elaborates on what the prohibited things are, because, you know, it just, I, I guess it could get tedious or impolite in the ordinance, but I think it gives examples and situations where you certainly don't want to damage the tree.
Please.
Uh, just for reference, those things are delineated within the current two thousand and four standard, which was attached to the staff report in the back. So, that adds a lot of that detail, uh, discussing that.
Yeah, and the, it was the, it came out of the, the subcommittees was, uh, dialogue and discussion of other things that we're seeing on construction sites that aren't currently addressed within those guidelines.
And those are included in this prohibited?
To be recommended to be added into the list.
Right, so, all of these are recommended to be added into the list? I think they're very good.
Question related to, um, landscape screening, and the impacts of three times TPZ. Impacts to landscape screening, is that something that is already considered or not considered?
No, it's not considered, it's been brought up to me multiple times, how we're protecting the trees for three years, and then we're, and they're just trenching all along around heritage trees to put in landscape screening, but re-landscaping is required and is important, and we need privacy. And so, this is just... And so this is just a way, if there is already a heritage tree located, like an oak, I get a lot of complaints of oak trees that's close to the property line. And then they're just putting a row of English florals right up against the oak tree. And that's what we were trying to avoid the whole time. And so this is just coming up with a, with a bare minimum, low standard of you can keep some of the screening bushes away from the heritage oak tree, but still have screening.
So to bring up John's point, the fact that you just identified as well trenching and then dropping landscape screen, is there a provision, or is there the possibility to hand dig the screen and still be consistent with, and create this landscape screen requirement? A meeting?
We could require hand digging. I mean, I still think there should be a distance away from the oak that you're doing that because you are impacting the tree. And you're adding irrigation where oaks don't want irrigation. So at least at three times, you're not getting irrigation there. Because oats, that's the worst thing for oats is irrigation. So when you're doing the landscape screening around oak trees, I've seen actually oak trees defied because of the landscape screening ordinance.
Can you require drip rather than...
Is it actual water?
Because the water is... Because the screening is usually planted right next to the trunk on both sides.
Mm-hmm.
Oh. Any members of the public like to come in on this particular item? It's of all interest. Please, John.
Just, just to add with Sally's saying with that, even if they can't dig the further thirty-six inch box English floral right in front of the oak tree, they still got to cut their roots to protect the new tree. So you're still losing roots. So the whole reason for the TPZ is to protect the roots. So to answer Mr. DeGolia's question about the adjacent towns, sorry to go backwards. The TPZ is Noma Park, Palo Alto, Los Alcoas, Mountain View, ten X the diameter. They let you encroach. The only thing that ever made sense of a planner told me in Noma Park that as long as they're not impacting more than twenty-five percent of the roots and the foliage above ground, and that encroachment area was, enough of that area was protected, that they would approve it. So that's not to say that that's the gold standard or anything, but that's become generally acceptable in those towns. So a lot of architects will draw those illustrations, and those will get slapped into the arborist reports so that the town arborists can review. So in my mind, that percentage of the area that would be impacted would include landscaping, but almost never does anywhere. So...
So I, I will say that over the last few years, we've had considerable comments from neighbors related to wanting the screening, but yet this identifies a concern with, it's damaged if you do, damaged if you don't. So you put the screening in, you impact the oaks or the mature trees. Don't put the screening in, then the oaks survive. So, I mean, it's one or the other.
Well, I don't think there's, she's saying, don't put the screening in, just give it some distance. So it's just really, are they still qualifying for the screening based on what our town standards say?
The state of the criteria.
Right? We're just giving them a little breathing room, so there may be a gap there, right? They swear not impacting those roots.
And maybe the choice of planting.
And, you know, aren't you seeing more landscape string, screening along the perimeter? That's just not a oak hedge of pitus form or, or English floral, but it's like a, it's like a, yes, a lot, a lot, a lot. But no, more trees that are kind of staggered, you know, large trees?
Yeah, I mean, they do plant English floral, and they do like layering of things.
Right.
Which, which could, that could happen if you have those gaps, and you could mainly do another tree further away.
Yeah.
Or let's layer it for screening.
Which I think looks better overall anyway. For a little more natural environment.
Well, I, I, in the screening discussion, the oak acts as a screen. Right, where, where that oak tree is, their screening provided, so...
So then it wouldn't be required in the area, unless the canopy is further up, then there is some gap. But the idea is that anything existing counts as screen. So you, it's just when you're filling in an area, so...
So there should be the flexibility to make it prohibited, that they be put in a thirty-six inch box tree, they're the root zone of that oak, when frankly, they're just doubling the screening by doing that, and it's not going to be healthy for either of those species.
So by modifying this, or considering this, does this mean that we have to modify the landscape screening requirement? Or we're still, okay. No, no, yes.
No, we do not need to modify.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay. No, no, you're shaking your head.
We've got two questions.
You're good.
One was the one.
All right.
I just added that in because, because we're reviewing this now, and we might not review this again for fifty years. So, and that's an issue right now. So I thought, well, why not throw that in as another criteria?
Gotcha. All right.
But it, I do get a lot of complaints about that. Neighbor fences, damaging trees, landscape screening, damaging trees. And a lot of arborists talk, well, why aren't we protecting the trees at the landscaping place? Because that's when all the damage happens, and trenching all over and adding irrigation. So it is important, I think, to at least do that.
Seven?
Yes. Well, on to our last topic.
Tree inventory.
Which, item number six. This was to require currently dealt, tree inventory of the town of the town that permits, that includes both photographs of existing heritage trees, as well as appraisal of that tree in the town of the report is conducted. And there was some direction related to that topic from the council that in considering, consideration of those appraisals and inventories, to also just particularly be cognizant of existing heritage trees on adjacent properties that fall within a certain distance of that development site shared property.
Okay.
Please, so just to clarify, so is that saying for every permit, and we will get those photos and that assessment?
For every development permit, yes.
For every development permit? I, I think that's...
How can we determine whether or not trees have been prematurely cut down before the permit is, you know, brought to us? Freshly cut stumps? Freshly cut stumps?
Yes, unless it needs a stump sometimes, right?
Yeah.
We were having one of those calls yesterday.
Me?
Jennifer, Sally and I were the person, not just cut the trees down, had the roots ground out of it as well.
That was an extensive operation.
But the neighbors took pictures, and Sally got out there and took pictures of the stump.
I actually have a question related to, and it's probably a legal question as well as a development question. Council made a suggestion or something to the effect related to fifty feet within a shared property line. So in other words, to get an inventory of a neighboring property, fifty feet? How can we legally do that?
So currently, it's not clarified, but currently for the grading and drainage permit, we do require a ten feet, to show ten feet because the utilities or the drainage might affect the neighbor. It's not, it's not always done. And, and it is helpful when tree issues happen with property lines. It is helpful to have that information. The reason it was at fifty feet was because, well, depending on what the, what you decided is the TPZ zone, because if you had a tree on the property line, then the TPZ, you would want to see where, where a tree, you know, neighbors...
The question's a little...
That's a little different. The question's not why we want it. The question is, can we impose that on a neighbor? No, so if a neighbor says no, then you can't do it.
It just seems that putting criteria and saying fifty feet, it doesn't, I mean, I agree with the concept of knowing what the trees are and potential, but having a requirement that they legally cannot comply with doesn't seem like something we should mandate as a requirement.
You could just say that they're required to get that information so long as the neighbor allows access to that property. You can also take pictures of it. I think it would be in the neighbor's best interest to allow access for that measurement.
And sometimes, in fact, this came out of marijuana laws in the past. A lot of times, you don't have to hold the camera up real high. If your property has ability to see into the neighbor's yard anyway, that's, that is in public view.
I would...
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you, it, it's done all the time. In fact, it was done this week, so...
I, I, I just think we should be a little uncomfortable requiring our property owners.
No, no, no.
The neighbor's council's...
I totally agree that we don't...
We could do the drone thing.
But with Google Maps, with Google Maps being what it is today, a lot of the times, it gives you an angled view, and you can see what's on the other side anyway. I mean, it's not like, we're not suggesting that you, the only way to do it is to go measure, and you're going to have to have...
The purpose of it, though...
The issue, I'm sorry, so designers, the issue or the concern is what happens? I want, I want to do something, my neighbor says, no, you can't come over here.
You can't do it, too.
Then you can't.
There's got to be some way that we can proceed.
So I, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to interject for a little bit to... I will, I see, because of the fact that this is a required inventory and a certain degree of accuracy that we would assume that we're relying on.
That's the goal.
And, which is the goal. I am not comfortable with a fifty-foot requirement, but as we see trees along a perimeter and estimating and proximating and so on and so forth, I think it's a reasonable standard. But once we reach over that fence, I have issues. But I do think that if trees are along that fence line, because I believe this topic was my, one of my colleagues of concerns, we near his neighboring property, and he's not here. So I know that that was the logic of that approach, and I think that that's where we were trying to get to. And I don't think that fifty foot was the number, but it was the trees along the property line and a reasonable assessment to create the protections. Please, somebody. Oh, oh, thank you for having me.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, like, do you take a smaller town like Noma Park and Palo Alto, where they use ten foot from the fence?
Sure.
So I was looking at a job close to here, and I saw a big value on the other side of the fence. So I assigned the tree protection zone that whether I measured it or not, Sally would be okay with, because I knew they want to put in circular driveway in order to buy that tree. So I, I think that you can reasonably look over the fence and see what's close to the fence and make a raw assessment of what the tree protection zone should, should be, both by rough diameter and canopy spread.
And I, I think that that, I think that is like the goal, the logic is that to be reasonable and fair to make sure that the prop, neighboring properties' trees would be fully protected without overreaching. So I think that that was our goal when we were talking about it. So I think that that language needs to be modified or cleaned up that is reasonable without true... Without hiring a drone, what she said.
I do think reasonable is the right word. Reasonable, that's going to be difficult.
Exactly.
I've had a lot of trouble fortunately where there wasn't a number. And I mean, to the extent that you can, and you can do even better than reasonable, I do think that lends itself to a big dispute. Now you, everybody wants to supply their own arborists, now we have driven arborists. It just, it does get a little complicated.
If we're mapping, right, you know, I mean, I, I think this goes hand in hand, but obviously, tree inventory and mapping. And what's a reasonable, what's a, please, Rick?
So I, I totally agree with Carrie. Fifty is not the right standard. I think we could use the canopy of the tree. That, that would be a fair standard. If the property line's within the canopy of the tree, that would be reasonable. And, and we could spell out that that would be reasonable, and that would help from a legal perspective.
You can get that from Google Maps in its public domain.
No, I understand, but I'm saying in our ordinance, we can spell it out. I, I don't think we want to use fifty.
No? So, talk some new language in there, and then get back to us. But, Dave, please, Rick.
I know we're about to end, but we started with seven. And the one thing in seven that we didn't deal with was the recommendation that we strengthen the penalties. And given that we've now had this discussion about the TPZ, it begs the question of the penalties. So I just, I, I don't want to ignore that.
Well, I think that we'll have some assistance in this, because as the criteria in the demolition and identifying trees, we'll also have the appraisal prior to demolition component, which would give us the ability to assess values to things. And then we have a base at five thousand dollars. And then we have the value of trees being appraised, which will also be in the item identified in number six.
So that's clearly what we have.
I would just say, where we have the photos and we get what we're requiring, I don't think we have a problem.
Right.
Where we have someone who eliminates the trees before the photos are done, we need some criteria to assess very strong penalties.
This is almost for people that are trying to follow the rules. It's the non-rule followers, we want to make sure that the penalties are significant.
And would that have to be at a certain diameter? I know it has the heritage tree kind of size for the tree removed to be removed.
A heritage tree, period, correct? Yeah, you're removing a heritage tree, and you have not even started the process. I have a serious issue with that.
Even if it's only a little bit?
Well, it's...
Okay, well, an oak is, right? But it's got to be a certain diameter.
I mean, I know, Woodside has a pretty strong requirement.
Yeah, they've got twenty-five thousand dollars.
Would it be healthy?
I mean, it's, it's heavy.
It feels like, I don't know if you can fleet the issue of our ability to prove it. It's sort of word of proof is one, one issue.
Right.
The other is, is the size of the fee, which should be substantial enough that, that deters it.
That really deters it, right? The idea is, well, you could just fold in a five or ten or fifteen thousand dollar, that's relative to building a house here. That's not a lot.
We can use a real example. This week, we were at a house where there was a sixteen thousand dollar fine that was proposed doubled to thirty-two because of two trees that were removed, the two that were removed and just left there in sections. But we were able to get there while there were still some sections left to, to measure. But there was an issue in their mind as to whether or not at four feet, because there was no four feet left anymore, at four feet, can you prove that this tree was a heritage tree? And, and that's going to be a difficult issue. If someone's trying to violate the law. I think Rick hits something on the head. If there's a crown on a tree that's a certain dimension, that can trigger, under the arboricultural standards that they use for, sometimes for valuation, I know that that's one of the issues that we might go to where there's no remaining evidence. Because that's the person that, that offends me the most. Somebody that goes in on the weekend, cuts the tree down, and has the stump ground on Monday morning. And then, you know, Sally's out there looking at sawdust going, wow, it looks like a lot of sawdust was a big tree. But that's all she's got.
Can we, just like, can we put in the ordinance a burden of proof issue? So that the burden of, burden of proof, rather than falling on the town to prove it was an orphaned, a heritage tree, if the town makes a determination that it's an orphaned tree, and the person has removed the tree, is the burden of proof on the person who proved that it wasn't?
Can't really shift it that way, because, like, in this case, how many trees, forty trees or something that they've removed in the backyard? It was a very big backyard. And of those, only two were heritage trees. So, I mean, it would certainly make it nice for Sally to just say, well, we had forty trees, you should have called. But that's not how it works, unfortunately. It, it really is the reverse. And, and this was a good case where the neighbor saw it happening and called. And it, but for that, we, we wouldn't have anything to even look at or talk about. And so it's not, it's not a perfect system, and it'd be nice if we could figure out a better way, but I'm not sure how.
I will say that I have heard that there have been several jurisdictions, including Woodside, there have been significant impacts fees that may be used to hold or remove trees of significance or in general, not available. I think that other jurisdictions' information would be useful in this, because I think that we want to do it right. But we want to make sure that if you're going to do it, there's going to be a penalty if we catch it. Because chainsaws and attitude often sing on weekends, for some reason, and we want to prevent that.
Presumably, there can be some non-monetary consequences as well. For example, permits are not going to be granted, and...
It seems that's where the real cost is, right? You want to build a house, fifteen thousand dollars doesn't matter much, but a year, six months delay matters a hell of a lot.
Yeah, that, um...
Jersey might...
They've been, yeah, the courts don't have not bought under that program yet. But, but we do require replacement trees, and it could be a substantial number. And by the way, some of these numbers, there was one Monterey fine in Monterey that was worth a hundred thousand dollars. So when, when somebody gets hit with a plane...
It's not...
I understand.
It's just not a material amount relative to what you're doing.
You know, I think we're talking about the delay of a permit issuance, that's a challenge. But the lay of a permit, once it's issued to settle a code enforcement issue...
No, no, we can...
But the way of a permit, once it's issued to settle a code enforcement issue, that's a little bit different.
We've, we've been known, we've been known recently to say timeout. You needed to do this before your permit could be signed off on, and you can't proceed. And building has red-tagged a job recently, and until we could go out and determine trees and roots and things like that. So it can be done, but you just can't say in advance, because it's, it's a, the standard is you have to issue the permit if they meet certain criteria. And one of those criteria isn't that they've done something else illegal.
I guess my point is too, that I think would be a real deterrent, over and above whatever the monetary fine is.
I agree.
If a construction area might, yeah.
You were talking about not being able to tell the size of the tree in the first place before it was already cut down. Couldn't you go to one of these Google aerial photos and see the canopy and get an idea of what the tree looks like? Is that not specifically?
Unfortunately, our definition of a heritage tree is a certain diameter, measured at forty-eight inches above the ground.
Yeah.
And because of that, when it's got a beautiful canopy on it, you can't see the trunk. In fact, in this case, the, the contract was arguing that he had measured the tree and it was within a half inch, that it was too small. I mean, yeah.
Well, you can use the photos that when they play on Zillow, you can look at those photos and you can see trees.
Sometimes it's obvious. I mean, when the tree is this big around, but, but unfortunately, the close ones we're going to lose.
So any, uh, members of the public want to make any final comments? I'm going to close public comments. Please. Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. Anything of my colleagues here, and I consider your colleagues, um, from the planning commission?
I have one final just question for Sally, and it regards number six, the inventory, which I agree with Rick or ditto Rick, and I think it's a fantastic idea and a great starting point. I just want to know how it fits into your process and if it adds a lot of additional work for you.
Well, it's, uh, we would require a demo permit so that we know what's on site when they're sending it to demo site. And, uh, we would, we also require that they give you the drainage, and it's just something that they need to submit and regularly look over. But it's, it's most important when something happens and I can drive it, so.
Just to have it as a record.
It actually saves me time in the long run.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a fantastic idea.
Yeah.
Uh, any other? Uh, I would like to make a, a couple of comments. Uh, one related to the fire district. Um, I would like to see the district work with the town and creating some flyer that we could utilize and send out to the residents, kind of an educational document about working on reducing the fire and people trimming and try to get our residents a little bit more educated of the risk factors of that. Um, that would be good. I want to thank staff for their time, and I want to thank every member of the planning commission, and including Eric that's not here today, but, uh, that, you know, we really do appreciate you guys. And, um, I don't think that at any point in time that when we step on something, that, um, we try to make something offensive. We just have a different perspective, and, uh, having these joint meetings is very helpful to us as well as, um, listening to you guys, because we really do care. Um, you guys do more of this than, than we do, but we also probably get more of the complaints than anything else, maybe more than you guys do. Um, so, um, again, thank you guys for that. Again, staff, very good job at, uh, making this flow. Um, and it's not a fun, I'm sure it's not an easy issue. I won't say it's not fun for Sally, it's always hard for Sally. Um, but, you know, it's great, so, you know, we, we do appreciate it. So, um, if, uh, Eric, since, you know, you got your, uh, your team here, anything you want to handle?
No, I, I agree that the joint meeting really does help get alignment and, uh, gets, uh, better context for both. Um, and I, I like the fact that we're going to be implementing something that we can, uh, really, uh, you know, stick to. And I think that was the objective all along, so that's good.
Thank you very much, and, uh, from all of us, our condolences to your recent loss. Um, uh, it's commendable that you're on the phone with us at all.